Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, August 6, 2024. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier. Participating virtually is Commissioner Carolina Mejia and Commissioner Emily Klaus. Commissioner Edwards is having technical issues today and will not be joining us. We have a three-hour session if we need it. And we'll take a break about halfway through. We also have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder with us in the boardroom. Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Our primary goal this morning is to review this afternoon's draft agenda for the second time. So we'll pick up with that. And the meeting will be called to order at 2:00 PM. Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Fournier. And approval of the agenda, any changes we might need to make this morning. There'll be an opport- there's no presentations today. There'll be an opportunity for the public to address the board and a county manager's update. Is there anything you're planning to report, can I give you at this time, Chair? Okay. We have three consent items. Three A is a sheriff's item for Lake Lawrence Regatta application. And we have Chief Monsias here. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so we do have a consent item for approval of the Seattle Outboard Association shutting down or closing down Lawrence Lake from September 13th through the 15th. They'd be shutting down just a portion of the lake to conduct their racing event. This is something that happens quite often. We usually have one in the beginning of the summer, one in the end of the summer on Lawrence Lake, as well as a different association that uses Black Lake. So it is a common occurrence. They have turned in all the paperwork and the, the, the plans that are attached in the packet. So we're just requesting the Commissioner's approval to have this event.
Any questions for Chief Monsias regarding Lake Lawrence Regatta application? Hearing done. Thank you, sir. Good to go.
Thank you.
Three B is Commissioner's Office item, setting a public hearing to consider adopting the special accommodation excise tax ordinance.
Jenica.
Jenica. Jenica Machado, Economic Development Manager.
Good morning, Jenica Machado. As you may recall from last week, the next step in the special accommodation excise tax ordinance is to set a public meeting, and I'm happy to take any questions about that.
Okay, questions on the consent item to set a public hearing for Tuesday, September 17th at 3:30 PM? Nope. Okay, thank you. Three C, appointment to the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. Ashley Brooks was selected by the board, and this is simply to...
Yeah, this is simply to formulate her appointment. Once that is done, I will submit the appointment letter to Ashley and to TRL, who will provide me an update on where the other jurisdictions are at, their concurrence.
Chair, Amy contacted the TRL staff last week and then updated Ashley yesterday.
Questions for Amy on three C? Nope, okay. Item four A, Commerce Clean Energy Elect- sorry, Commerce Clean Energy Fund Electrification of Transportation Systems Grant Agreement. Rebecca Harvey.
Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, so I'm requesting approval of this and the following item concurrently. There are two agreements to accept and manage state grant funds for the installation of fast EV charging stations and Level 2 charging stations at the Southwest Washington Agricultural Business and Innovation Park in Tonino. The first agreement is a grant agreement between Thurston County and the Department of Commerce to receive the grant funds. The county will manage the all grant reporting, and once reimbursed, will pass the funds on to the City of Tonino, who is fully responsible for implementing the project. So the second agreement is the interlocal agreement with the City of Tonino that requires them to comply with all terms and conditions in the grant agreement. And I will be happy to take any questions or comments.
Four A and four B, questions? Rebecca? No? Pretty exciting?
Thank you.
Thank you for the excitement. That started.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thanks.
Five A, Public Health and Social Services Interlocal Cooperation Agreement for Home Investment Partnerships Program. Alex Purce, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alex Purce, Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. I'm here this morning to ask you to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between Thurston County, the City of Olympia, and the City of Lacey to participate in and receive funds as a home consortium under the Federal Home Investment Partnerships Program for the program years 2025 to 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute the agreement. So like last week, I explained that Thurston County is the urban county, which represents all cities and towns except for Olympia and Lacey, and is required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with the cities of Olympia and cities of Lacey to form a home consortium in order to receive and spend Federal Home Investment Partnership Act funding. The county must renew our current agreement for the next three-year period, which will cover program years 2025 to 2027. This renewal period, we're signing with the City of Lacey, which is different than previous renewal periods because they have notified HUG that they intend to become their own entitlement community. The City of Olympia, City Council approved and signed this agreement at their July 16th meeting. And the City of Lacey, City Council will review and sign their agreement tonight, their August 6th meeting. We have to submit these documents by August 16th.
Any questions on this item? Doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
Yep.
Five B, interlocal cooperation agreements and MOU for Community Development Block Grant, Urban County Entitlement Funds.
Yes, so this is similar to my last item except for this is to approve the interlocal cooperation agreements and memorandums of understanding between Thurston County and the Town of Yukota and cities of Verne, Yelm, Tonino, and Tomwater to participate in and receive funds as an urban county entitlement community under the Federal Community Development Lot Grant Program for the program years 2025 to 2027, and authorize the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to execute these agreements. So like the previous renewal process that I just described, we're required to renew our urban county CBD consortium through these documents. These renewals include the interlocal cooperation agreement outlines roles and responsibilities, restrictions, and CBD program requirements. And the memorandums of understanding outline more specific details regarding our specific governance structure of our consortium. For this renewal period, we're requesting to enter into interlocal cooperation agreements with the Town of Yukota and cities of Verne, Yelm, Tonino, and Tomwater. Previous renewal periods, we've also signed with the City of Lacey, however, as I just stated, they've notified HUG of their intent to become their own CBD entitlement community. So these ILAs and MAUs will be combined into a package for the home ILA and be submitted by new years in August 16th.
All right, questions on five B? Nope. Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Public Works up next. Contract award for Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project, 63025. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Marcus Dorvik will be presenting this this afternoon. He's a civil senior, or senior civil engineer in our design group. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners award a contract for Thompson Creek Road at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project on July 10th. A total of four bids were received in response to a call for sealed bids. The low responsive bidder was from Masonic Construction of Gig Harbor with a bid amount of $1,343,493.40. The current 10-foot diameter metal pipe will be replaced with a 70-foot prefabricated bridge, which has already been delivered to our Tilly facility and is ready for installation. The removal of this barrier will open an additional 10 miles of upstream habitat. Would that be happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Matt on six A? Nope. Item seven A is Commissioner Reports, and we have no public hearings, so pretty, pretty concise agenda this afternoon. Proclamations and awards.
Good morning, Amy Davis, Board of the Proclamation to Recognize Target Zero has been removed from the August 6th agenda. I'm seeking your concurrence to move the proclamation to the agenda of August 20th. I'm still working with staff to receive some updated statistics and to ensure all of the right parties are involved and invited. So I think if we have a couple more weeks, that would be a great benefit to the proclamation presentation.
Okay, so we'll have two on the 20th and none today. All right. Is that it for proclamations?
I, yeah, just the next proclamation is for overdose awareness, and we've started some outreach for that. But I wanted to make sure we include any specific groups that anyone had in mind to invite to that.
Anyone have someone they'd like to have specifically invited for International Overdose Awareness Day? Lots of possibilities there if you think about it, but in the past, we've had, what, public, maybe our opioid coordinator, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well, yeah.
She would probably be the best person I could think of.
To give background and what the county kind of has done, kind of status of the, brief status of our, you know, our plan.
I think it would be good to invite the task force members and to kind of also get an update from them. I mean, there is an opioid task force, and as we've gotten new money, I know we're still working on the ILA. But something similar to that, because that is spending time again, and maybe giving the community an update might be a good opportunity.
We can work with Amy on Katie.
Sure, Katie's got a mailing list to hit those people, and they can, she could probably spearhead that.
Commissioner Fournier, I don't know, this is, I don't want to like, I don't know if this is morbid, I don't know if that's the right word, but like, just to stress the gravity of the situation and the, and the fact that it's the leading cause of death in Thurston County, would somebody from the coroner's office be an appropriate representative? I mean, that's an element of the
I feel like we've had someone from the coroner before, so I mean, I haven't seen
What's that?
We had him last year.
Okay.
So, yeah, potentially appropriate if they, I mean, if they wanted to make it short, right? Because if we're going to have folks from the task force, but maybe
We can, we can work with them on having them prepare some statements and weaving them together so that it's concise.
Have there been improvements since last year? I know it was, the stats weren't good last year in terms of the trends, but it'd be kind of interesting to hear that. Okay, if there's anybody, if you think of something else, just let Amy know. We have a couple weeks to pull that together. Okay, let's look at advisory boards and commissions.
Yes, start at the top with the Law and Justice Council. We've received four applications for the two vacant community member seats. These members must be members of a community-based organization as well. And I've confirmed that Paula is eligible, Casper is eligible, Liza is ineligible, and Priscilla is also ineligible.
So we have two eligible candidates for two open seats. And do you know the groups that those two are involved with? I haven't seen the application yet.
Yes.
Are you asking you all alternatives?
Yes.
It's Casper.
Casper. And Paula is, works for the Friendship Diversion, just a nonprofit.
Okay, would Commissioners like some additional time to look at these, or? I just, I haven't actually seen them go.
Yeah, I, I haven't either.
And this is the Board of County Commissioners that makes this appointment? Does, does the Okay, yeah, I just don't, I was part of the Law and Justice Council when we created those seats and appointed the first members, and I just don't totally remember the process, but I'll take your word that is how it worked, because I don't recall.
Yeah, most of the members on the council are appointed by RCW and by our code, but these two members are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners.
And the, the two, this is TBD, it's not that they're ineligible, it's to be determined if they're eligible and are not?
Correct, but I did, I was able to confirm ahead of this morning, and so Paula is eligible and Liza is ineligible.
Okay, and what makes a person ineligible?
Liza and Priscilla are not members of a community-based organization.
It's in the charter, I think.
Are they, have they been talked to about that?
Yes, we asked them to keep it that way.
That's, I would think that's kind of a general, kind of like, everybody's a member of some type of community-based organization.
I don't think those, either Liza or Priscilla were able to confirm membership to any organization.
I think it's a commu- I, I don't remember the language, so maybe I'm planting what I thought we did, but I think it's a community, it's a community-based organization that has some nexus to law and justice issues, not just any organization.
Like a little league organization?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, that, it's not about that. It's about, it's not about like, community involvement. It's about like, having some subject matter expertise or representing a sort of a larger swath of the community. Like, the last two folks were part of Civil Survival and Justice Not Jails.
Says that Priscilla Terry, it says that she's a member of Capital Land Trust and Providence St. Peter's Community Board.
She served on the TST board as well, but like, see, that's not really, I mean
She's currently serving, is she not?
She is currently a member of the TST.
Okay, well, let's, we don't need to take immediate action on that. Let's wait for Commissioner Edwards and look at the applications and take this up again next week, if that's okay with the Board.
Chair, just like, Commissioner Klaus seems to have dropped off the Zoom. We're trying to contact her to see if there's a problem.
Yeah, I noticed that. I didn't, sometimes that means she's about to walk in, but yeah, if somebody could reach out, that would be great.
Yeah, we're doing that right now.
Okay.
It's interesting that there's two first-name LIZAs in both of those groups, and that's just not a name I see that often.
Let's go then to, we've got others, then, sorry, yeah, thank you. Veterans Advisory Board, is that the next one we should pick up?
Yes, the Veterans Advisory Board has received resignation from Heather Miles. And the Board reviewed the previous pool of applications that they received in late spring. It was a large pool of applications that they reviewed, and we made several appointments. And so they reviewed that pool of applicants again because, and any new ones that we had received in addition to that. And they recommend appointing Tom Schrader to the vacant seat now from Heather Miles.
And Liza Narciso as reappointment?
Yes, she's eligible for reappointment.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? So that's a recommendation from the Veterans Advisory Board. I know Mr. Schrader, don't, I know he's military, he's I don't have an issue with those recommendations. Does the Board want to take action or delay this for a future meeting?
I don't mind those two recommendations either. Did we, did we get anything from the Veterans Advisory? Usually they, they make a recommendation on Sunday, though.
They, they, they made these recommendations.
Oh, they made, okay, I missed that part. Yeah, I'm ready to move forward then.
Amy was saying that they, they reviewed their previous fairly large pool, together with whatever they'd gotten since. I don't know how many that is, but they, they selected Mr. Schrader as their recommendation. And Ms. Narciso as a reappointment, do I assume is acceptable? Okay, Commissioner Fournier, do you want to move these forward?
I'm good.
Okay, let's move those two appointments forward then. Can you do that today?
Yeah, we can do those on Tuesday.
All right, put on today. Okay, wait, oh, Heather Miles, you just resigned, actually, under resignations. Okay, and then, then we've got a list of vacancies underneath that, and it's like noxious weed, we need to get, that's not a very big board, so that's probably one we need to see.
Can I ask, can I ask about the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District?
Sure.
So this was one that I, I remember appointing someone for this. Is this a vacancy for Thurston County or Lake specifically, or?
This is a vacancy that is a district-wide appointment, and I just received an update from the City of Lacey yesterday. They had received three applications for this, and the City of Lacey Mayor has reviewed them and provided a recommendation. So they are working to confirm that appointment within the next couple of weeks. And will have, they should be providing a letter of recommendation to us.
Wait, so is this a Lacey appointment, and then we just affirm it, or?
It's a district-wide appointment. I think in the past, it's been processed similar to the TRL appointments with the City of Lacey making a recommend, facilitating the recruitment process, receiving applications and making a recommendation to the City of Olympia and to us and the City of Tomwater. And so they expect to have the bulk of applications and their recommendation to us in the next couple of weeks.
When we get the applications for that, I would like to see all the, all of them.
I'm sure we get those from the City of Lacey.
So what is the next step, Amy? I'm, I was taking notes in my
In a couple of weeks, we should have a letter of recommendation from the City of Lacey.
For this particular vacancy? And is this the, we only, we only tango with this every year or two, so it's always forget. Is this the, the group that kind of deals with the rack and the, there's like two things, Childers Museum and the Rack?
Yes.
Okay. All right, did you have your head? Okay. All right, well, then more to come on, on that one. Then let's just take a look here. District 3 Fair Board. If I remember correctly, that person doesn't have to live in my district, I just have to make the appointment. Is that how that one works? Or they do have to live in the district?
This position does need to live in your district.
Okay, so I need to find it. Okay. Or if anybody else knows a District 3 person, let me know. I'd like to get that filled. Historic Commission, we've got one open seat with three alternates. That's quite a bit better than in the past. I guess we're going to talk about salary commission here in a moment. We have a handout. Before we do that, let's look at noxious weed and storm and this, what we're going to be calling the RAB, R-A-B, Water Resources Board. So on noxious weed, we need a District 4 and a District 5. Do they have enough people to function? I can't remember their
They do at this time, yes. And just to call, the weed districts are different than
Oh, they're not Commissioner Districts, huh?
No, they're not.
Yeah, they have their own kind of
I did not know that, I
So online, we do have the weed district map and resources for interested applicants.
All right, well, then that's something to look at, but just need to try to find folks for that one. This new one, the storm, what was the SWAB, is now becoming the RAB. And it says here we have District 2 and then two at-large seats?
Yes.
Are those new, or those just like, were the, the kind of aftermath of the, of the new seats we created?
These are old from the, from SWAB. And so right now, we're working on updating the website and the seats listed and membership qualifications. So once that's updated, I'll update this to RAB with the new seats listed. We have received a few interested SWAB members who are, who would like to serve on RAB.
So there might be, but you don't have their applications yet?
No, not at this point. We're still, I think we're getting it until mid-August, and then I'll bring those applications to you.
Okay, well, that's, you know, the, the things they're going to be working on are a pretty significant community interest, so I'm pretty certain we can find, we can fill that committee with interested parties. We just have to get the word out. Okay, let's look at salary commission, because that's something Commissioner Mejia brought up. Check in, we have, it looks like we have three seats vacant. Go ahead, Amy, why don't you lay it out for us?
Yeah, I just, Commissioner Mejia inquired on the vacancies on the salary commission yesterday. So she's providing the current information and So she's providing the current information and the vacancies right now for the professional representatives. The vacancies for that are the Organized Labor Representative, the Professional Personnel Management Representative, and a legal professional.
I'd, I'd like to see, like, a concerted, like, pointed push on filling these just through public notice, and, you know, not just, hey, these are our advisory boards. I'd like to get this one out there for these specific things, and then, you know, like, if it's, if it's put out to the public, then we can, it's easier for us to also solicit folks.
We can do a concentrated recruitment effort and work with Maria on that.
Yeah, Commissioners, what I'll say is Maria's also working on bringing something for your consideration that would drop the specified requirement for these seats, which I think she believes would provide her opportunity to fill in broad. Does believe that it's been beneficial to have, you know, a legal professional. They've, they've been looking, we can definitely do a concert...
Well, I don't want to do the push unless, if we're going to change, like, I think that's been part of the issue with this one, is like, everybody's like, well, we don't know what we're going to do. We talk about all these different things, so it's, it's hard to go, like, recruit when we're also having a conversation about changing things, but like, if, if we're going to have Maria come with that, I, I would want to pause.
Yeah, she can come fairly quickly. In fact, we have something we'll be sending out to you most likely in the next couple of days, with the recommendation, bring that before you, if that's something that you're interested in. She can come and give an update, but getting those filled, they've been, I think it's going to challenge for beyond this year, nine years past. So the recommendation that she's working with is, it would still be, look for folks that have expertise, but it wouldn't be a requirement that they're currently in that role.
Okay.
I think that's going to, would require a code change.
Yes.
So that, that will take some time, so I think on some level, recruitment might be, it might need to happen anyway while we're going through the process of scheduling that, and...
Okay.
Maybe we do pull at the same time, kind of concurrent, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand, we've had trouble with, there's always a, you know, difficulty when you specify certain criteria, but there's a, there's a real, like, thought process behind having that kind of subject matter expertise on that. And I think right now, in addition to just not having people, they're hamstrung because they're missing three of the four of those, of those specified seats. So I, I don't think that they have the breadth that the task requires. So, you know, even if we were to eliminate those, I would still be looking for those same qualifications because I think they're important. So I think we, kind of following up on what Rob said, I think we need to keep looking for these people, and if, if we end up deciding to loosen it up, that's a different decision, but we still need somebody with those qualifications. The legal one, you could argue, but definitely labor and, and personal management type of perspectives, I think, so...
Yeah, we'll work with Maria and go out. So Commissioner Fournier, to your point, we'll do a full-court press on getting the word out so that you can also see if there's anyone within your spheres of influence that are, that are interested to participate. But I agree, not having the folks that understand how some of these dynamics work has been problematic to the commission.
You know, like, legal professional, you know, I know an attorney that's retired, you know, but are they not qualified because they're not currently in the profession? Like, that, or, you know, somebody that's, has personal management, rep, professional personnel management representative, what exactly does that, is, is there something that qualifies that? Does, do they need to have a bachelor's degree or master's degree in H R?
Yeah, we'll get the qualifications, because I'm not too familiar.
Same with organized labor representative, who? Not our labor organizations, but, you know, a grocer's union in Seattle? Is that, like, what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, we'll get the qualifications so we can clarify what the, how broad we can go and to recruit the right folks. At this point, we do need bodies on this commission so they can function and make the decisions.
Yeah.
Thank you for the update.
Okay. There's no other questions on that? Does that cover what you, we need to cover? You need for advisory boards and commissions, okay. That leaves us with Commissioner items. We lost Commissioner Claus, just for the record, and so we have three commissioners present, we still have a quorum. Are there any issues you want to take up at this point? Nope. Okay, short and sweet, come to the end of the agenda, we're adjourned.